Time is 7:01. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Lansing City Council for May 19th, 2025. Clerk Jackson, could you do the roll?
Yes, I can. Councilmember Pellevanaglu, councilmember Spadafor, councilmember Brown, councilmember Carter, councilmember Garza, councilmember Hussein, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Cost.
Here.
We have a quorum of eight, all in attendance. We are next to meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, do we have anyone that we would like to remember tonight? Okay, I will put someone out here. Lifelong employee of the city of Lansing passed away this last week, Marcos Jimenez.
Jimenez.
Jimenez, thank you. He was a lifetime city employee who did pass away last week, unfortunately. So if we could keep him in our thoughts, I would appreciate it. Can you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before you have the approval of proceedings for May 12th.
Vice President Carter.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 12 minutes as presented.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
So next, we are consideration of late items.
Okay, Vice President Carter.
Yes, suspension of council rule number nine is needed to allow consideration of late items. Late items will be considered as part of our regular portion of the meeting which, to which they are to relate to the two noise special permits, one being the Lansing Housing Commission constructing a new 63-unit apartment building on 220 East Calumus Street, and the other one, Lansing Housing Commission is constructing a new 56-unit apartment building on 510 Cherry Street. There will be a second public hearing for this. This was due to, this is late due to publication wasn't sent on time.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place to suspend the rules. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, next we are to special ceremony, a tribute and recognition of the 2025 Parks and Recreation five-and-six-year-old Stampede U.S. Soccer Team. Come on down.
Councilmember Jackson. Yep, come on down, soccer team.
Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, the soccer game and practice, the stampede players endure a grueling Michigan spring weather, including bitter cold and rainy conditions, and still excel on the field in special games. Whereas, the players elevate their abilities and skills in dribbling, passing, shooting, and defense to become the best that they can be. Returning players and new players join forces to become one of the best teams in the league. And whereas the stampede players, Alon, Amari, Amy, Benjamin, Brayden, Damian, Elliot, Ethan, Ray, Kenley, Lola, Luna, Peyton, Rocky Lee, and Trish, demonstrated extraordinary teamwork and leadership during the game. The result is the Lansing City Council recognizes the 2025 Parks and Recreation five-and-six-year-old Stampede U.S. Soccer Team for an outstanding spring 2025 season.
And with that, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Congratulations, kids. I thought we were going to see soccer moves.
All right, next we are to comments by councilmember and the city clerk.
Okay, do we have any comments from city councilmembers? Councilmember Brown.
Just wanted to briefly say, I see Dick Pefley in the audience and all of BWL for all of their work in service during the storms to restore us. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Hussein.
Yes, I wanted to remind folks first that tomorrow, sorry, May 20th at 6:30 p.m. will be the Churchill Downs Community Association's next neighborhood meeting. They will have Mayor Andy Shore there to speak to them about issues kind of broad-based across the city of Lansing, but also things that are important and pertinent to their specific, sorry, specific neighborhood. Again, that's at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfred Smith South Side Community Center. Next Tuesday, which would be May 27th, Rejuvenating South Lansing will have their next meeting. Their featured speaker this month is Sheriff Wrigglesworth. And so if you're interested in that, I highly encourage you guys to get out. That is at 6:30 p.m. as well, at 5825 Wise Road, so same room, same building. And then I also wanted to thank the Lansing Board of Water and Light. The restoration was fantastic. However, I wanted to speak specifically to an issue we had out on Lucy Street. And so I see Smilly out in the audience. We appreciate you. I see Breen out in the audience. We appreciate you, Dick, Heather. We had an issue out on Lucy Street where we were getting ready to do some much-needed paving out there. So there was some concrete work being done, some ADA ramp installation, and we had the entire street go black, in terms of, well, in terms of streetlights. And so you guys turned that around very quickly, made that neighborhood very happy. We certainly appreciate you guys. Thank you.
I have councilmember Spadafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce the third in our series of at-large constituent contact meetings. Please mark your calendar for Saturday, June 26th, at 10 a.m. to noon. We had the pivot. We were going to do it at Stabenow Park, but luckily our parks are so popular that was already booked. And we are moving that to the Rio Town Depot. The focus of this event while hearing concerns from constituents that do show up will be the progress on the public safety complex, as well as discussions with the Lansing Empowerment Network. So mark your calendars, June 26th, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Rio Town Depot.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pellevanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. I would just like to invite the community and remind them that this weekend is the Cristo Rey Fiesta at Cristo Rey Church. It is a three-day event beginning Friday at 4 p.m. The address is 201 West Miller Road. Lots of things to do for community members who are not traveling this holiday weekend. Fresh homemade Mexican food, lots of entertainment, live bands every night, things for children to do, a market set up for people of all ages. So if you are so inclined and would like something fun to do this weekend, please consider coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I would like to add a big thank you to the residents of Lansing who came out for their neighbors after this storm. It hit very hard in the first ward near where I live, on the east side in Grossbeck. And I was out helping folks, but it was incredible to see neighbors helping neighbors. Lot of people out helping each other, trying to clear storm debris, you know, all kinds of things, get the roads open. I even think that some of the mayor's staff, Mark, attempted to get a tree out of the street. I had to go finish it for him, but I do appreciate that sense of community. That was, you know, it's good to see neighbors coming out and helping each other. That's, you know, that's what, you know, our city is all about. So I appreciate that.
And then the item from the city clerk's office is that we're interviewing now paid interns for the fall and spring semester. Just email a resume and cover letter to city.clerk@lansingmi.gov. We have an internship page on our website. You want to have more details on that. You do not have to be a student, and we certainly give priority to Lansing residents. We're excited that we had Maglan and Jessica from Lansing for this semester. So, what we're now doing for fall and spring semester. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone has an announcement, you have one minute to share.
Just a reminder that this is coming up Memorial Weekend under Memorial Weekend Ceremony in Evergreen Cemetery at noon in the Little Arlington section. It is a revitalized and revamped service this year that you will find refreshingly new and different from prior years. It still retains the significant parts of the service, but it also brings in some new speakers and new elements. So please come out and join us at noon in Little Arlington for the Memorial Weekend Ceremony. Thank you.
This Wednesday, the Old Ever Neighborhood Association will be hosting its meeting at 6:30 p.m. at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard at the Village Lansing Suite G. Also at this meeting, Community Mental Health, they will actually be in attendance at this meeting and will probably be presenting as they're going to be moving their services to the Old Ever Neighborhood where the McLaren building used to be. So keep an eye out for that. Again, 6:30, May 21st, at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Village Lansing Suite G. And hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Thanks for being here tonight. I am here to talk about an event I'm planning with some buddies of mine. It's the 10th Annual Lansing Bike and Seek, and it's a bicycle treasure hunt all around Lansing. It's 10 miles long, family-friendly, and you go around and you scan yard signs that we checked with the Parks Department. They're fine to be there, so don't pull them out, especially not the Turner Dodge House. That happened last year. So leave the signs that look like this. Anyways, it is a bicycle treasure hunt around Lansing. You scan the signs, and you solve clues on your phone, and then you go around. There's eight clue locations, and it's competitive. So anybody out there, two weekends from now, May 31st, come and do the race with a bunch of other people. It's super fun. And we have a Scrap Fest artist making the trophies. So very cool. And then if you don't want to do it with a bunch of people, you want to do it on your own, the course is open for the whole month of June. So check it out.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Seeing none, then we are on to speaker registration for public comment legislative matter. You have one more minute to sign in on the blue sheet, to speak on any items four through 14, including our public hearings, consent agenda, resolutions for action, ordinance for introduction, and ordinances for passage. If you want to speak, you must sign in. So now on to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick because I know we're going to have some folks come up and give an update on the storm cleanup. First, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to Lisa Hagan Lawrence. Sorry. So I want to, like the others, I want to thank so many, our police, our fire, our public service, Board of Water and Light staff, our 3-1-1 staff, and all of our residents for the incredible response, for being neighborly, for helping others. The tag team between Mark Lawrence and Ryan Cost was funny to watch. His chain breaks, and Ryan shows up with a chainsaw and cuts the wood. And really, it was, it was very cool to see all of our residents banding together as we do in Lansing. So I do want to thank everyone. Additionally, I want to thank a variety of others. Sinus Dramis Law Firm gave out 260 free custom-fitted helmets and gave away 24 bikes at Station Eight in the Grossbeck area. Right on Saturday, right after the storm, we had tons of people there who were able to at least take a positive. Our police officers who were playing cops in community basketball downtown on Saturday, which again was really cool to watch, seeing our cops playing ball with our kids and holding home court advantage over state police, which was nice. I want to congratulate Senator Debbie Stabenow, who had a tree planted for her in Stabenow Park by Climate Action. So that was really cool to see Senator Stabenow at her park. Thank you to everyone who made a wonderful Seek parade and festival this year at Adado Park, which was tremendous to see all the folks that came into our city. And I want to thank the folks over at Best Furniture who did a great car festival, car show and festival over at Best Furniture because it was just wonderful for the community. All that being said, I know, Council President, we've got Dick Pefley from the Board of Water and Light, we've got Andy Kilpatrick from Public Service, and I thought council might want to hear from them on storm efforts and storm cleanup and ask any questions. So if you gentlemen will come forward, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. If you gentlemen can make sure your mic is on down there, green light's lit. You know the routine.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, yeah, typically this stage in a major event, we come down and update council, answer questions, but a lot of councilmembers have reached out for updates, which we always welcome. Don't be afraid to text or call us. So the storm that came through Thursday night was one of the, another really bad storm for us, probably the worst that we've seen for transmission. The transmission poles are the ones that are really tall, 110 feet, and they're down Wood Street, Lansing Road. That's the grid. And we've lost two transmission poles in 25 years. That was the tornado that came through two days after 9/11, and it took down two transmission poles. We lost 24 in the storm in four different locations. So that's the most damage we've seen. It took out 24,000 customers, which is 25% of our service territory. We restored 90% of them in 48 hours, and we only have 130 customers out right now. So we're essentially moving out of storm mode. Most of those customers are in the Grossbeck area. We have 40 crews in there right now. We moved everything over there. Wood Street was a disaster. It wasn't the worst, though. Canal Road by Millet, Kreitz Road by the Myers Warehouse, and then not quite as bad was where you get on 496 at Pine. Transmission was down in all those locations. That system is built to withstand a 90 mile an hour wind. And we had very little distribution down, 29 poles, but we have 37,000, so that wasn't bad for us. And we brought in 75 crews from around Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, Illinois to assist. Our restoration efforts have gone very, very smooth, and we had a target date of Wednesday, and essentially we're winding down right now. The last major piece is to get Grand River open. We did have power restored to all the schools for Monday morning, although talking to the superintendent with Grand River and so much construction there, they elected to close Patgale, but I told them it'll be cleared up for tomorrow morning. So the crews have been working around the clock. They take a brief rest time, which is, you know, following my wishes rules, and they're back out there. So other items noteworthy on the storm is the Erickson Power Plant, which was decommissioned two years ago to show you the magnitude of the storm. The conveyor system, which is superstructure, wind, tornado took it all to the ground. It all collapsed. It ripped right out of the footings. The General Motors Parts Warehouse down there had, the whole wall is gone, and our inventory was out in the field. So that area, this came right, storm came right through there. And we have, up to an hour ago, we've done the restoration without a single accident of any of our crews, not even a pinched finger. And so we're very appreciative of that. But I want to spend the rest of the time I have answering your questions, because I'm sure you have some questions.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Thank you, Dick. Remarkable effort to get that done so quickly. You talked about the loss of transmission lines. Can you speak just briefly about the south reinforcement transmission line project and how that might have played into this, and why that work is so necessary?
The reason it's so necessary is that we did the west side reinforcement a few years ago. Had we not done that, the entire system would have collapsed because the transmission restoration did not affect customers, because we were able to reroute through there. Once we get the south side reinforcement project done, it gives us more flexibility. So the amount of resources that we spent on Kreitz and Canal Road, which was two days with about 35 crews, only brought back 60 customers out of 24,000, because there's very little distribution feed, and they were commercial customers. So that project will help build resiliency. We are seeing more frequent storms and higher velocity winds, and so we need that to sectionalize the city. Also, a major reason for that is your power supply sources used to come from central-located utility, like the Eckert and Erickson Power Plants. Now, a greater percentage comes from the rural areas, from our renewable portfolio. So we have to bring that energy back in to the Lansing area to serve our customers.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Cost. Thanks for being here, and all that you guys do as courses of the city as well. It's been, for several years, conversation, and you know, with more storms and things like that, about bringing lines underground. Could you speak to that possibility and what the barriers are, challenges, as well as the opportunities?
Sure, happy to do that, have that conversation, and Township's had it in East Lansing a few months ago. The grid, the 138, I don't know anybody that buries that. It's 138,000 volts, so, you know, burying that is not really practical. But typically, the grid doesn't go down. Like I said, in 25 years, we'd lost two poles up until this event. Now, distribution, you can bury that. In new developments, we do put the distribution underground. Going into an existing area is very problematic. It's seven times the cost of overhead. It does, you have to bury it between the curb and the sidewalk, so you take out all the trees. And that's problematic, because there's no other place to put it. You can't put it on the inside of the sidewalk, because that's private property. You can't put it in a road, because you can't build infrastructure in a road electric. So you're right there. And then in Lansing, where the footprint's a little smaller on some of the houses, the transformers that are on the poles would go in your front yard. So that's not very attractive. And then another part that's a burden on the customers is right now, they have a meter socket and a weatherhead that goes up. That's all privately owned. They would have to hire electrician to come in and replace that and put infrastructure that goes in the ground. And that's private property, so we can't do it, even if we elected to. You have to be a licensed electrician to do that, and that's about $2,500. So it's a pretty big burden on the customers. I've just had this conversation at another, in East Lansing, and said, we're willing to bury the lines. Out there now, they're not like the city. You write a check, and we'll start burying them. Here, you know, the burden would fall on the board, but there's, you know, a lot of things taken into account, the tree canopy, the transformers, which they're quite sizable, and one transformer will feed three to four houses. So some neighbor's going to have that right in their front yard. As we said, when we, as we build in the rural areas, the lots are a little bigger, and when it's designed, you can get it into the backyard. And so it's not as, it's an eyesore. And so those are the barriers, but it is certainly doable.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? I actually do. Can we talk about, this might be Andy Kilpatrick, the pickup of branches and the stumps from the trees?
All right. So I think our numbers are probably not quite as impressive as Dick's with crews and everything else. We basically, we've had multiple crews since the storm started, so three, and a combination of trim crews and kind of grounds cleanup, chipper's, everything else. But as far as yard waste, the way we pick up yard waste is by hand. So we can't pick up large bundles or anything heavy. We're picking up, each person is probably 800 to 1,000 picks per day, so bag or bundle. And so if you're talking about large logs, that's just not possible for the safety of our staff. The other thing is, our trucks are not made to compact that. So anything bigger than three feet long and larger than three or two-inch diameter, the packers can't compact that. So basically, our pickup is separated. Yard waste will continue as is, meeting yard waste guidelines, storm debris, we will pick up separately. If it's mixed together, it basically all becomes storm debris. We will be behind on yard waste pickup, because people are putting out a lot more stuff. So we are still maybe halfway through Monday's routes. Because of the way the storm hit, probably as we go through the successive days, it will get easier. But our hope is to be through yard waste for this week by Saturday. But we will be a couple days behind. And then storm debris cleanup, as our crews are finishing critical cleanup, I mean, we still have a couple places where we have trees on houses, and we are trying to clean right away. We are not aware of any roads that are completely blocked. And so we're clearing roads, sidewalks, and then we'll get back with crews to clearing that. But it will be several weeks, and we will assess as we go through this and kind of know exactly what people are bringing out, whether we can do it with our own resources, or whether we need to get a contractor in to assist us. We also do have a drop-off this weekend, on Saturday, at Crevo Park, as we've done in the past, from 8:00 to 4:00, so people can bring debris out there. Our hope is that people that hire a tree company to take down a tree in their backyard or something else, don't just put it out the curb. That's really more for homeowners, smaller stuff. So we know that there are larger limbs, but that's the other reason we're separating yard waste, because yard waste has certain guidelines and is not storm removal or debris removal. So that's what that separation is. And so we're through probably 60 to 70% of the service requests we've received. We know that there may be some that we have not gotten yet. So that's something that people have questions. During the day, they call 3-1-1. If there were something that was critical over the weekend, we would tell them, either call our 24/7 number or 911 if it's a life safety issue. But as we get through those, then we will transition to the storm cleanup, kind of combination of yard waste on one side, trying to keep that as close to schedule as possible, and then debris cleanup, which could take weeks, as it has in the past when we had, you know, last year's storms or larger events like the ice storm years ago.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Okay. Well, I thank you both for being here tonight, and I appreciate all the work that you've been doing the last few days.
Thanks, Mr. Ford.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And just to add to all that, we are going to do our best to seek reimbursement. I did declare an emergency for sake of reimbursement. Clearly, they've got it covered, but we have significant expenses. Of course, with the processes we learned last year is we declare, we ask the governor to declare, and then if she does, then we would go to FEMA and ask. I'm not overly optimistic at this point, but we are pushing for the governor to declare emergency for our area, and then we will ask our members of Congress to lean on FEMA to try and reimburse. Certainly, we're happy to have provided, you know, funding from our taxpayer dollars for other parts of the country. It'd be nice for us to have a little bit of that, too. So we're going to keep working on that through emergency management and through our, through my office, and keep you in the loop as we go.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Shore. And before I forget, I want to thank the crews that came from out of state and from different cities to come in here and restore our power, and the men and women that were working on those lines to get that power restored, because without them, we would still be sitting in the dark. So I appreciate all of them and their efforts.
All right. With that, we are to our public hearings. We have a noise special permit hearing for the Lansing Housing Commission request to allow for the building of new 63-unit apartment building at 220 East Calamazoo Street, and then a second building, a new 56-unit apartment building at 510 Cherry Street. So in addition to those public hearings, we also have our consent agenda, agenda for action, ordinance for introduction and passage.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. We have item four, noise special permit, Lansing Housing Commission request to request to allow for the building of a new 63-unit apartment building at 220 East Kalamazoo Street, as well as item five, a new 56-unit apartment building at 510 Cherry Street. Please note, as indicated earlier, these were never published. So we will have a second public hearing, but we are honoring this tonight as well for both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, first of all, make council aware that we have received one written public comment regarding the objecting to liquor license, item 10, from Julianne Vitten, if I'm saying her name right. And then our first speaker is Nick Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway, and then our virtual speaker, James B. Lanka.
Hello. So is this thing on? Okay. So I'm speaking on agenda item number nine, and that is orders to make safe or demolish the owners of 1044 Ontario Street. Honestly, this is really, like, why do we have to have so many of these red tags? This is seriously getting, this is serious, again, I hate to repeat myself, but this has gotten way out of hand. All of these houses red tagged and are in the make safe or demolish category. It clearly shows how the city has failed over the years to address the issue. And again, it's like a mess in your room that has piled up, just like, oh, I'll deal with that later, not realizing that that would eventually come back to bite you as it's now too late to clean it up. And because of how big the mess is. That's basically what the red tag crisis right now is. Honestly, again, I think this is something that should be done on a case by case basis. If it's a landlord doing this, then yeah, they got to be punished for letting their property sit in decay for many, many years. And if this is an individual house owner, then they should have been helped over the years to prevent something like this from happening, to prevent their property from being red tagged. And the red tag issue has contributed to homelessness because now several unhoused who might be able to afford houses can't get a house because certain houses and properties are red tagged. And as a neighborhood leader, I am deeply concerned about this, especially since several houses around where I live are also red tagged and might be in the make safe or demolished category, or probably will be at some point. And I kind of feel desensitized about this, and I don't really feel angry about this anymore, even though I really should be. And again, a lot of these red tagged houses have been so much of a problem that I think children and teenagers have died in them, which is a really sad thing and really, and shows that this really needs to stop. And I ask the City of Lansing to please do better on this issue. And if there is any minor damage on any house, then there should be at least some help on them. And landlords absolutely need to be held accountable. That's all I'm going to say, and I'll yield the last few seconds of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by our virtual speaker, James Bianca.
Okay. Reiterating what was said in the committee of the whole meeting, I think that the Ethics Committee needs to put some regulations into place, requiring people that need to file affidavits of disclosure, to update those anytime there's a promotion or a change in their responsibility, anytime they have partners or silent partners, those should be declared. And then on the objection to the transfer of the liquor license, I support objecting to that. If you have to fight the appeal on the other two, I encourage the City Council to vote to fight those appeals. And on the budget, once again, I will say the same thing. We need to not pine a sky, but best practices. We need to 100% fund and staff and equip police, fire, parks and rec, public service. And then whatever's left after those are 100% funded, then you distribute that between the rest of the city departments. And you eliminate all the little fluffs here and there, including TIFAs, OPRAs, brownfields, tax abatements, pilots, anything that puts public money in private developers' pockets as a profit margin at our expense. Thank you.
Thank you. And so our next speaker will be virtual.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bianca. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm the attorney for Liquor Express Lansing, Inc., with regard to its application for a liquor license transfer to 925 East Kalamazoo Street, which is agenda item number 10, I believe. It's come to my attention that letters of objection were submitted to the MLCC. Respectfully, I'd like to identify and correct factual errors contained in those letters that seem to form the basis of the objection and hopefully clear up any concerns. It was alleged that my client's business is located within 200 yards of three schools and the Greater Lansing Women's Center. This is incorrect. It's my understanding there are no schools anywhere near the proposed business. And I believe the Greater Lansing Women's Center is at least a mile away. On two separate occasions, an MLCC investigator performed church and school inspections and found that my client's location was acceptable, and there were no churches or schools within a restricted distance. It was also suggested that there are six liquor stores within a half mile of my client's proposed location. But after reviewing Google Maps and the MLCC records for SDD licensed businesses and the entire zip code, I found just one that is approximately a half mile from my client's proposed location. It is certainly not one block away, as mentioned earlier tonight. And it is in a different neighborhood on East Michigan Avenue. It's also important to note that the quality dairy store that is mentioned as being near my client's business is not an SDD licensed business. It has also come to my attention that some are under the impression that my client owns a liquor store just down the street that has continuously been cited for violations. This, too, is completely untrue. My client does not own another liquor store in the City of Lansing. It's worth noting that some years ago, he did own a business with a liquor license in Lansing. And it's my understanding that the business was never cited for a violation of any kind. Moreover, my client and his family have exemplary records in the City of Lansing. They have owned real estate and multiple other businesses in Lansing over, for over 29 years. And to my knowledge, have never been cited for a municipal or state violation of any kind. So it is my hope that with this information and the clarification of mistaken facts, that the council will not object to the transfer of the license to my client. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We are to refer all the public hearings.
Committee of the whole.
All right. So then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the, we did the tribute this earlier today for the recognition of the 2025 Parks and Recs, five, they're six years old. Seven, the fireworks display license, Proyotekno Fireworks, Inc., for the city's Independence Day celebration, July 4th, 2025, and annual training requirement for all city boards and commissions training on Ethics, Ordinance, Conflicts of Interest, and Open Meetings Act.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right. Next, we are to resolutions for action, order to make safe or demolish to the owners of 1044 Ontario Street.
Councilmember Palley Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. We do have one property to discuss this evening. 1044 Ontario Street was originally red tagged on July 19th of 2016. This was heard by the Lansing Demolition Board on May 23rd of 2024. And it was ordered that the structure be made safe or demolished by, excuse me, made safe by July 23rd of 2024. We did have a public show cause hearing here on September 30th of 2024. This resolution before us is for a 60-day make safe or demolish order. I would like council to know that at our most recent Public Safety Meeting, the property owner was present. The property owner has made significant advances on this property, essentially assuring the committee as well as our EDMP director that the work will be completed within the next 60 days and this structure will be safe. So essentially, this resolution really just kind of ties up this whole process. I personally believe that this, that this structure will be safe within 60 days. And with that, I move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Councilmember Jackson.
Just quickly, that I probably won't vote to move it forward, just hearing the representations that a lot of work's been done. I know it's a way to kind of hold the feet over the fire or whatever the saying is. But if the work's been done and moving forward, I won't move the demolition forward.
Okay. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a quick question. I noticed on here underneath the current permit activities, it doesn't look like there's any current permit activities. And it says that the mechanical plumbing is on, or mechanical is on hold from May 14. Can you explain that?
Sorry, just a moment. Um, is that the page from this evening's packet?
Uh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's in the resolution.
Thank you. I don't believe that this, uh, this is not the most updated information. At our committee hearing this past Tuesday, there were, one permit was accepted and inspection did occur. And I believe there were two more inspections that had been scheduled within the next several weeks. Again, this was from last Tuesday. But this table here on the attachment does not reflect the most updated information from EDMP. And if you're interested in the specifics on that, I can certainly get you the dates of the upcoming inspections. And if those have occurred already, what the outcome was.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any further questions or comments on this? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Next, we are to objecting to the transfer of liquor license, Liquor Express Lansing, Inc., the SDD and SDM license transfer to the location of 925 East Kalamazoo.
All right. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Vice President Carter.
Thank you. And so is there any motion for the objecting to transfer of liquor license, Liquor Express Lansing, Inc., SDD and SDM licenses transfer location to 925 East Kalamazoo Street? Yeah. President Cost.
All right. What we have before us is a resolution to oppose the liquor store at Kalamazoo in Pennsylvania. I want to be clear that the resolution does not have a distance from schools or the Greater Lansing Women's Center, but a proximity, which it is within proximity. I would make another point to my fellow council members, sitting out, sitting up here just now, off the top of my head, if I was standing in that spot, I could go to Baker Super Liquor, Sunset, Eric's, Meyer, The New Family Dollar, which is now a liquor store, Potter Walsh Liquor Store, QD Village Party Store, and QD on Saginaw and Cedar, and I'll be within a five-minute walk. If that's not enough to thirst your quench for hard liquor, there's beer and wine places, the list would be too long. So that's all I have to say on that. And I would make a motion to move this.
We have a proper motion in place. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we are to the fiscal year 2526 budget.
Vice President Carter.
Yes. So earlier today in council, our committee of whole, we were able to have some discussion regarding the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget and policy. So with that, there was a couple amendments. So I just want to bring the public to, up to speed on that. We did have amendment for the sustainability specialist position. This position will be responsible, but not limited to grant writing, implementation of existing and new programs, including the climate action change or climate action plan, recycling and landfill management, and energy efficient programs throughout the city. The specialists will also help with the commitments to the environment by reducing pollution and increasing revenues through grants, energy efficiency, and better waste management. And our second amendment was to add two firefighters for a total of three new positions for the fiscal year of 2026, and also to create a legislative analysis for a position for stronger attention to the impact of city legislative proposals. Overall, it was a good discussion. Both amendments were passed. And with that, I make a motion for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Spatafor.
I just wanted to thank everyone involved in this. I think it was a really collaborative and productive process this year, and really looking forward to seeing some of the exciting changes and continuation of great programs that are in this budget. So thank you all at this table for making it happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, I think I'd add to that, actually. This was one of the smoother processes, I think, since I've been on council. Part of it, I think, was that, you know, when we started our process, you know, kind of late summer, and we started looking at priorities, and then obviously we passed those October 1st. I think, I've never seen an administration respect, I think, that process, as well as yours did, and then actually include, I mean, a line-by-line kind of discussion in terms of how you guys vetted those, how you consider those, and actually included that as part of your transmittal letter. So I really appreciate that. I think also the fact that you respected what the Public Service Board put forth, I think is commendable. And then also even addressed what you heard out in the eliciting session. So when you say collaborative, I, yeah, truly, it really was, between, I think, this body, some of our boards, commissions, our citizens, and then obviously the administrative team, the departmental directors, agency leads. So it seemed smooth, because it was. And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments on the budget? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right. We're next to the late item, the setting a second hearing for the noise special permit for June 9th for the Lansing Housing Commission new building at 22 East Kalamazoo Street. Or can we do both at once?
Vice President Carter.
So a motion for the, should I do both together? I'll do both, the noise special permit for Lansing Housing Commission request to allow the building of the new 63-unit apartment building at 220 East Kalamazoo Street and the 56-unit apartment building at 510 Cherry Street.
Okay. So we will take up the first resolution for, excuse me, not 510, 220 East Kalamazoo Street. Councilmember Spatafor.
I just wanted to clarify, and I apologize, I'm using the online version. These are the late items.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. I just needed to know where to look for those on my phone. Thank you.
Yep. No problem. All right. So no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Okay. Passes unanimously. Next, we will move to the 510 Cherry Street that was moved. Do we have any further discussion on that public hearing for the ninth? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right. Next, we are to ordinance for introduction. I shall read in the record, the ordinance for the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 1060 of the Lansing Codified Ordinance by amending Section 1060.08 to clarify the procedure for nuanced abatement by adding the code official as authorized to abate. The ordinance read for the first time and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Palley Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. Yes, essentially, this
Yes, essentially, this is an ordinance that will... It essentially says that the code official, as defined in the International Property Management Code adopted by the City of Lansing pursuant to ordinance 1460.01 or either of their agents or designees may remove or abate the nuisance. And this is addressing any solid waste, recyclable material, and/or yard waste accumulated in a manner which is a public nuisance. Essentially, this is going to make the process more efficient. And it does outline that it will be the code official or their designee who would be responsible for this. With that, I would move to the resolution to have the public hearing for this on June 9th at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place for a public hearing on June 9th. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, just if he's listening, I want to thank Raleigh Van Fossen. Our code official is officially the Economic Development and Planning Director. And it would have been easy, I think, for him to buck this a little bit, because this is bringing more work back into his department. But not only did he support this, he actually asked for this. So we certainly appreciate Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen. And then obviously, Public Service, our Public Service Director, Andrew Kilpatrick, is kind of listed in terms of office or position, I should say, not office, in this as well. And he did not fight the, I shouldn't say inclusion, but remaining as someone that can take this on as well. So we appreciate him, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right, next, we are to ordinance for passage, which I read in the record. An ordinance to the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1615, Section 1615.02, to allow fireworks on June 19th of each year from 11:00 a.m. until 11:45 p.m. It's read a second time by its title. And the ordinance was reported from the Committee on City Operation. Is under order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerk. And so, just as he said, I make a motion to, for passage for ordinance, excuse me, ordinance for passage, amending Chapter 1615 for June 19th. The only for, if you guys want to look at the actual ordinance, only line, Item 16, is updated, which is June 19th until 11:45 p.m.
Fantastic. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Jackson, could you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Ordinance pass, eight-zero.
Fantastic.
You want to do immediate effect?
Councilmember Brown.
Oh, request for immediate effect.
Okay, we've got a request for immediate effect. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Immediate effect.
All right, next, we are to re-adopting our codified ordinances. An ordinance to Lansing, Michigan, re-adopting the codified ordinance of the City of Lansing is read for a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the committee whole and is under order of immediate passage.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, this is for the re-adapting the codified ordinance. This is an annual re-codification for ordinance that are up after 10 years. This is just to make sure that we do not have any additional lapse when it comes to our ordinance as we've had in previous years. So this is just a preventative measure. And with that, I'm...
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed. Think we do I E on this, right? All right, then we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. For you still, if you'd like to speak on any city government-related matters, you have one more minute to fill out a yellow form, if you've not done so already, and get it to Maggie. With that, we are to reports of city officer, boards, commission, communication petitions, and other city-related matters.
Vice President Carter.
I'd like to motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by President Cost.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right, items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commission.
Place on file.
And then we have a liquor license application, MS1 LLC, DBA Joloff, for a Class C license with Sunday sales, catering, dance, entertainment, outdoor service, and extended hours permit at 221 South Washington Square.
City operations.
And then we have a communication petition, a communication from Ian about ambulance service.
Place on file.
All right, next, we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any further remarks by council members tonight? Okay, I would like to just say, you know, we went through this budget, and it was a very collaborative budget. And I appreciate that a lot of the requests that city council made this year, the mayor was able to work into the budget. And I want to also thank the mayor and council member Hussein and Garza for all working in a collaborative way to get the two additional firefighters on top of the one, so three altogether, and the additional role for our staff, which is much needed on this floor. So I appreciate it very much. And I appreciate everyone else's efforts on this budget to come up with recommendations that were something that the mayor was able to put in there. So thank you. Budget season over.
All right, next to remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to join in, this is my chance. But honestly, I want to thank this council. You all did a really good job of indicating what I think were priorities. We were able to work that through. I'm totally going to copy this process. I think I've learned a lot over eight years. And, but we understand how to work through what you're putting in, how to look at your priorities and work through mine. We knew you asked for $4 million, and many of you were like, look, these are our, these are our asks. Let's see what we can get in. So we took a really hard look at that and listened to the public and listened to the firefighters and the police officers and our unions and others. So I appreciate the process, I appreciate the collaboration. Again, hearing about what was important to the people through their elected representatives. And I do appreciate it. I appreciate how we can all work together and get things done for the city. So I'm excited to see the effects of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then, we're to public comment on city government-related matters. We have up to three minutes to speak. First speaker is David Ellis, followed by Brad Girard.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I'm going to be largely repeating things that I have been saying before the council for the past three years now. So one of the very first, very first meetings I have ever attended at city council, I made the comment that in the city, you cannot police your way out of bad road design. You cannot educate your way out of bad road design. You can only design safe roads. That is the only thing that we can truly do to fix the crashes and the street racing and the injuries and the deaths that are happening on Lansing roads. So far, the statistics haven't been fully compiled for last year, but it looks like that the state of Michigan has, for another year in a row, had an increase of approximately 10% of pedestrians being hit by cars. This is the fourth year, I believe, in a row where we are seeing this exact same result from cities across the state not doing anything. These results aren't consistent across every city, though. If you look at cities like Ann Arbor, which has done incredible work to increase bike lanes and to increase pedestrian safety, they have seen dramatic reduces in crashes from both pedestrians being hit by cars and cars hitting other cars. It's been shown that bike lanes protected, let's clarify there, protected bike lanes along a road, reduce the risk of cars crashing into other cars. Forget about the bikes, putting the bike lanes on the road reduced crashes by 30 to 49%. These results are consistent with results from the NYC Department of Transportation, which I've quoted quite a few times. But they've also found that unprotected regions, put the paint line on the road, bike lanes, do nothing to reduce car-on-car crashes. We have had decades of results and data at this point showing that Lansing doing absolutely nothing is going to continue these issues. I see some inklings of results coming through, but not nearly enough. I have zero faith in the city's public service department to actually do anything. I've seen from Michigan Avenue and in upcoming projects like Pennsylvania, I'm sorry, not Pennsylvania, from Pleasant Grove, where there are designs put forward that are immediately scaled back or ruined altogether. We are not going to get out of our dangerous roads. The street crash, the crash we saw from the street racing on MLK, that is what we have designed. That is what we have earned. This was the work of the city not being willing to make changes. And unless, if the city is willing to step up, this is going to be one of many. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brad Girard, followed by Brian Early.
Brad Girard, Lansing firefighters, local 421 president. I am coming to speak on the significant increase in cost sharing portion of retiree health care. It was brought to our attention that there will be increased payments from the retirees towards their health care. And the reason cited by the city was that they've been calculating their health care wrong. I feel as though is that health care has been calculated correctly from 2013 to 2021. Within our labor contract, it states that employees, let me go back one second, that there was a public act of 152 that was passed back in 2011 that promote, signed into law a state hard cap. Within our labor contract, it says that employees will become responsible and pay all costs in excess of hard cap amounts. That's active employees, not retirees. They, when they retire, and it says right in here in our labor contract that upon retirement effective on or after July 13th, retirees will pay the cost of their chosen coverage in excess of city payment for coverage stated in the section. So when we went, when PHP was taken away and Blue Care Network was put in place as the alternative, the comparable alternative, they should, they should, when they, the day they went out on retirement was what they are, they chose their plan. And they, and they chose to pay in excess of what the hard cap was at the time of their retirement, not on a year-to-year basis. The active employees are on the hook for, to pay above the hard cap, not the retirees. Numerous employees have taken money out of their deferred comp or their retirement to leave early, to choose a plan and go under those rates, under that fixed rate. They have the ability to go up and down and choose a base plan from option one to option two, and they will pay whatever those rates were when they left, not, not the year-to-year, year-over-year increase or decrease of the health insurance premium sharings. So I feel as though that the city has been doing this, kelping ladying this all along from 2013 up until, up until this year, when we had to go to a new health insurance carrier. So I would urge council and the city to take a look at this, have discussions with retirees, and see if we could come to some sort of alternative solution to this significant health care retiree increase for these retirees that are on a fixed income. So thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Brian Early, followed by Jody Kamai.
I'm assuming you, you meant Epling, but assuming that's...
Sure.
Okay. Members of council, my name is Brian Epling. I'm a retired captain of Lansing Fire Department, past union president. I'm here this evening to specifically discuss significant increases in the city of Lansing, is looking to oppose on the retirees of Lansing Fire Department and their associated costs for health care. For the letter I received today, the city of Lansing is of the option, and I quote, "It's come to our attention that the premium sharing amounts were not being done correctly." I stand before you as someone who was directly involved in those negotiations, the deficit elimination plans, all during my career, before and during and after the economic downturn. I've met with all the mayors, financial directors, human resource directors, labor managers, and all the city council members in my time. I've also spoken directly with principal union leader today, who was directly involved with the contract negotiation that's in question. And as he is also of the intent that the city is not doing it wrong. The city's been doing it right for almost 12 years, as it relates to retirees. Just as our president stated, that upon retirement effective July 1, 2013, retirees will pay the cost of their chosen coverage in excess of the city payment for coverage stated in Section 1. Chosen coverage. When I retired, it was presented in front of me six different plans. I had to choose. We agreed as a union, when hard cap came in in 2011, we'd pay the difference. Happy to do that. That selection I had, I could have chose an option that had that above the hard cap. I chose a plan that was good for my family, that at that time was below the hard cap. If I would have selected that, that is what was good for me for the rest of my retirement, till I reached 65 and go on Medicare and the in-laws wrap, that I was also involved in the negotiation for our Medicare retirees. So the contract language is quite clear. When it references Section 1, that the city is using in error, that is referencing employees, that the employees are on the hook for the substantive cost in the health care increases. They're still under contract, they're going to get wages. Some of them might work 25 to 29 more years of wages and overtime. We're on a fixed income. Firefighters, I didn't pay into Medicare. I don't get that. We don't have a cost of living. So I bring this to you, that I believe that the city is in error within theirs. I do, however, believe in individual or collective bargaining or group of individuals within the city hall is interpreting this wrong. And it's being done so on the backs of our retirees to fund, I believe, the three to six firefighters you're looking at. The arrangement, the staffing arrangements Lansing Fire Department deliver your service in this community, and the undisputable strain on the firefighters and the men and women is on, not on the men and women. It's on the city council, the mayor, and the fire chief to properly staff the fire department. We've known for many months, years, that the fire department... Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Kamai, followed by Deirdre Howard.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jody Kamai, and I am resident currently living in Sycamore Town Homes. As you may have been made well aware of the last council meeting, the remaining residents are now being forced to move out in unrealistic timeframe. This timeframe of 30 days, as well as $1,000 moving statement, is unacceptable. People work, are elderly, families with children who are still in school, and people with disabilities preventing them physically to accomplish any of this. There is also a process that Section 8 people and families have to go through that takes longer than 30 days. The housing availability is already greatly stressed, and there is a much bigger problem, and it's called communication. The appointed attorney receiver, who likes to call the remaining residents agitators, is not being clear and transparent to all parties involved. This includes all council members and you also, Mr. Mayor. There's a situation of gross negligence on his part transpiring, and every day, there is more contradicting hearsay coming from all parties involved. Lying is a harsh term and shouldn't be used lightly. But... and shouldn't be used lightly, but we, the residents, have proof from multiple different agencies as well as media that this is occurring. Mr. Mayor, can you explain why this is happening? All we ask is to be treated humanly and with respect and dignity versus being tormented by a hand-selected security by our attorney or receiver, who has been instructed to put pressure on the residents, make them feel threatened, harassed, intimidated, and shamed to where they will just pack up and move elsewhere to avoid all the drama. I know none of you would allow this to happen to your families, so why should we accept this to be happening to ours? Mr. Mayor and council members, you all should feel embarrassed and ashamed of what you have allowed to happen under your watch to good citizens of Lansing. We are not going to allow this to go unheard. But still, it comes to seem as it's falling on deaf ears. Also, where is MISHDA, Lansing Housing Commission, and any other resources throughout all this happening? No one is helping us. An investigation with full disclosure and transparency needs to be done ASAP. We remain, we remaining residents, we'd appreciate a meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, and any council members willing to take the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidra Howard, followed by Lauren Hicks.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm reside at Sycamore Town Home also. And the only thing we asking for is communication. Like she said, like Jody said, where is MISHDA, Lansing Housing Commission? Like, there haven't been a rental certificate in over years. So now we being kicked out, where was our money going to? Why was we even allowed to move out of there? Technically, we get 30 days, it's the 19th, they want us to be out on the 31st. We hearing all these rumors that the receiver man, the receiver said, the receiver said this, the receiver said that, he's gonna accommodate this, he's gonna accommodate that. But no one talked to the residents. Like, he calling us agitators, he got his security recording us, and all this, like, we gonna be a threat. We're not a threat. Then we hear from security, nobody wants to come out there and talk to us because they scared to come talk to us. If y'all look at it, what is y'all scared for? It's a handful of tenants, and we boarded up. I'm 44 years old, I'm going to school for my GED. I have not even been able to focus to even, because I'm about to get put out somewhere. Like, this is really emotional for me. Like, I supposed to go take a GED test on the 28th of May, when you gotta be out May 31st. How is that possible? I been rode around every side of town trying to find a place. Half of them is red tag. Then they want you to make three times amount of rent. If you want low income, how's you gonna make three times amount of rent if you got housing helping you? They want your credit to be good. Rent is high. For one bare miss, over $1,000. But they only want to offer us $1,000 to move or relocation in a, in a deposit bank by default, because no one has no leases on us. We were automatically put on month-to-month leases. Nobody told us that. We were told there was no leases. The leases got burnt and all this, with all our information. Like, all we asking for is more time and a little bit more money. You can't, $1,000, you can't move nowhere for $1,000, period, point blank. That's all, and I just thank y'all for hearing me out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Hicks, followed by Mateo Williams.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, I don't have my red shirt on today, but last week I extended to y'all an invitation to come out and do a tour with your constituents through Sycamore Town Homes and Fallen Angels Encampment. And today, I would just like to...
Can you pause for just a second? City TV, it looks like we lost the feed.
Ooh, we got some music.
...
I think you... You can continue.
Okay. Today, I just wanted to reiterate that invitation. You'll hear from a couple of residents tonight, and myself, I also live over in the Lansing Eaton neighborhood. Mr. Hussein is our representative. One of my housemates was one of your students. His mom lives over there as well. It's a great neighborhood, we love it. And we've been working really closely with the residents, and we have a plan. We have a viable plan. But we need y'all's help to back it up. And I would very, very much love to see y'all out there on Saturday, because we can do this, but we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mateo Williams, followed by Melissa White. Mateo Williams?
Um, yes. I'm here tonight up on a lot of bias I've been seeing with the policemen we got here. I was, I was arrested a couple of months ago on the safety of my grandkids, and the police, too. I feel, though, as me being a 58-year-old woman, me getting slammed to the police car, just to come see the safety of my grandkids, my grandboys, getting arrested, no probable cause, I feel like, um, they're doing too much out here, just, just simply as that. And I feel like you, as the mayor, it need to quit. It, it needs to stop. It needs to stop being swept under the rug, what a lot of us is going through. Everybody is not bad people out here. Yes, crime rate, rape, the wind up, okay? But everybody is not criminal out here. And I feel like a lot of us out here shouldn't get treated the way that we have been getting treated by Lansing policemen and a lot of the judges and a lot of the prosecutor attorneys up in this office, up in the office. It gotta stop. It gotta stop, and it's gonna stop. It needs to stop. I know numerous of people that's walking around here on tether over false police reports. I know a lot of people in jail, that's in jail over false police report. Come on now, it could get better than what it is. And what happened to me, I was born and raised here, okay? I never seen what I see today when it comes to the policeman, never. We was never allowed to disrespect the law, and the law was never allowed to disrespect us. But today, the policemen are worser than the people out here in the streets. I don't know if it's because they can't get away with it, because they are getting away with it. What happened to me, they're getting away with it. They called me sergeants, all of that, but they sweeping it under the rug, and I'm not gonna let it happen. What happened to me, me being violated with the policeman, I'm not gonna let it happen. So what I'm asking for is...
Thank you.
You need to start looking at what's being done out here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Melissa White, followed by Nick Zandi. Melissa White, Melissa White, all right. Nick Zandi.
Okay, so I'm gonna follow up on something that Mr. Ellis said about the street racing on MLK. I want to note that as the president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association, I would never give people, give drivers, crazy drivers, any permission to do any sort of street racing on MLK Boulevard, let alone anywhere near a church, a bus stop, and a taco stand, and a fluke, and also a few blocks away from the Village Lansing. But what is apparently giving them permission is apparently the design of the roads, which are just awful. I mean, having a road that wide is absolutely not safe for pedestrians. I should know this. I've had to go across those streets. I've had to go across Holmes Road and MLK, and I don't feel safe going across those streets. I have to run across those streets because of how wide they are. Having a road that wide is not practical and just all-around not safe for pedestrians. If we're at least going to have a road that wide, we should at least have a boulevard added in the middle, so that crashes probably don't happen, and so that pedestrians don't get run over. And also, we cannot just police our way out of every issue. I get it, yes, I do think it was a good thing that we did increase surveillance on MLK Boulevard to maybe better respond to accidents, but I don't know if it's gonna be good enough to prevent it any further of those car accidents. It is, again, it needs, the roads need to have a dramatic redesign. We need to at least put a boulevard in the middle and have a much more visible barrier between it and the bike lane, so that bikers and pedestrians can be safer and away from those cars. Because one of those trucks went right over the right-of-way and skidded right over some dirt, killed several pieces of grass and weeds, which is, take that what you will, I would argue that's environmental destruction, and again, probably killed several people who were just enjoying their tacos or enjoying their time at church, which is just downright infuriating. And also, again, it's only a few blocks away from the Village Lansing. And I'm sure Mike and Erica Lynn probably had to witness that or had to at least hear it at some point. And I honestly feel bad for the people whose, who had to witness that or who were caught up in that. It is absolutely infuriating, and there needs to be change to the street design so that can be prevented in any further incidents. That shall be the last few seconds of my time.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, we're adjourned at 8:25.